Mayor Bates.
Here.
Doug Burgren.
Yes.
Jeff Elliott.
Yes.
Paul Kessmerski.
Yes.
Mike Briscoe.
Here.
Jeff Stinson.
Here.
Joey Wolberg.
Here.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Alderman Burgren, taking any invitation by very bold.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one way in motion under our hand, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, your heavenly Father, I do thank you for this day that you've given to us. Thank you for the beautiful sunshine that we had. I thank you for each of our aldermen, our city workers. Father, just be very near to them all. Keep them safe and just be with the meeting tonight. May your will be done, in this I pray, in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Approval of the minutes for the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five regular city council meeting.
Second.
Motion to second approval of minutes for the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five regular city council meeting. You're ready, please go on the roll.
Jeff Elliott.
Yes.
Mike Briscoe.
Yes.
Jeff Stinson.
Yes.
Joey Wolberg.
Yes.
Doug Burgren.
Paul Kessmerski.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of counts payable.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second approval counts payable. When you're ready, please go on the roll.
Paul Kessmerski.
Yes.
Jeff Elliott.
Yes.
Joey Wolberg.
Yes.
Doug Burgren.
Yes.
Jeff Stinson.
Yes.
Mike Briscoe.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Financial report, balance, three million nine hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. Committees from earlier. Thank you. New business discussion of possible action approved, craft building listing with Sullivan Realty consensus to proceed for another six months?
Yeah, I think it's, we should, because in talking to the realtors, they say business in winter is just generally slow. And I really think we have a great opportunity here within the next six months. We're going to see Schimer daycare come online or be really close to coming online. And once we get that as part of our marketing, I think it's going to present an opportunity for the craft buildings. So I'd like to recommend that we move forward and have it open for another six months. I agree.
Same terms?
Same terms. Yeah, same terms.
Motion to second to approve the craft building listing with Sullivan Realty for another six months. When you're ready, please go on the roll.
Mike Briscoe.
Yes.
Paul Kessmerski.
Yes.
Jeff Stinson.
Yes.
Doug Burgren.
Yes.
Jeff Elliott.
Yes.
Joey Wolberg.
No.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Joey, can I ask you why you said no? I mean, you haven't said anything.
It's because he's been in the comments right now. Why?
It's none of my business.
No.
He has his reasons.
Yeah. Well, can you share with us? Because it's... You and I had a discussion about craft building. Do you really want to go back to that? You know, I think the public should know how you feel about this.
It's not sold yet, so don't worry about it.
It just, I think if you're voting no on something, and it's a personal opinion, the public should have a right to know. And I feel if you have a case, you convince other people.
Stop for a second, Mike. Why is it that whatever you want to pass, we all have to agree to it? But it's somebody else that processed something through, like for instance, with the skateboard pump. It had to be brought up and then, well, we have to have skin put into it, have everybody help. I don't think it's right now. I don't want that place sold. How's that?
Fair enough.
I told you that when we sat out there in the parking lot and you seem to have forgotten.
Sure, you did tell me, but I think the public should know.
Why isn't it so important that everybody knows why I vote no? You criticize me all the time when I vote no against you.
Because you say nothing, Joey.
Why should I want to? It's what, no?
But don't you think people should know? Why do you...
Can we move on?
Huh?
Can we move on?
Yes.
He said it.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. Item two, review and approval of law excavating T and M change order request. Jared?
Thank you. As you know, we've been working through project closeout with law and trying to get to the point where we can do the final draw request and pay application and change order to EPA to close out the Mill Street Water Project. We've been talking with Reed Law about their time and material requests for the additional work throughout the project, which I have summarized on the project update, one through six. As you can see in the table, we have the amounts that were requested and where we're at now. After talking through further details on their requests, working through comparing notes versus what occurred on those various days, and we believe we're at a point that his requests are fair and we believe that the city should take action on these T and Ms. And then, once the city does take action, we can go ahead and process the final change order. And that final change order would account for these additional time and material requests, the final balance quantities, which, so these T and M requests are increases on the project, but there's also a lot of items within the project that we did not complete or did not pay them through unit prices. So for an example, one of these items, number four, that they're requesting extra work for, part of that work wasn't part of the contract, but we changed the way we were doing that work. So we did not pay him for the unit prices through the contract. And instead, he requested to be paid T and M because the scope was different and required additional efforts on their part. So I just want to make sure it's very clear, even though these are additional work, some pieces of them were part of the contract, which will be a deduct, and other pieces of the T and M are truly just completely out of the scope of the original contract. And I can get into as much detail as you want on the various ones if you have questions. But in summary, these additional T and Ms, after you take some of the deducts out, are just over twenty-four thousand dollars. The deducts in the contract are currently around eight thousand, so we're just about sixteen thousand dollars over the contract amount with Reed Law, which is a pretty low number in comparison to like other projects being over construction amount. And we are also within contingency of the loan amount with EPA.
Isn't it common practice that before we do a change order, it comes before the council so we can vote yes or no on the change order?
It's supposed to be. That's the way it's written in the contract. However, too often contractors will either do it after or sometimes wait to the end.
Or actually doing something without any approval on doing it. They're just doing the change order without any approval.
In most of these cases, they were rooted in discussions in the field. Some of them, we were blindsided, but after discussion, like they're all rooted in some form of truth, like there was extra work. And what most of the conversations with were with law were mostly about the effort involved, comparing notes to make sure they seemed reasonable, and then just that we all agree it truly was extra. So there are some things in the contract that are gray areas, but you are correct that typically, the way the contracts are written, they're supposed to have written approval prior to doing the work, but it is very common for this to happen.
Do we have evidence that all of this work was done?
Every single detail, like we don't have a specific document that says, yes, exactly two hours, but in general, we all agree that there was extra work and it seems reasonable. So the problem is, is if there was some form of extra work on the project and he didn't inform us it was extra work, we didn't write down that it started at eight oh two and finished at ten oh two. We do have general notes to go back and compare to and agree that, yes, there was extra work. It was probably part of the day. So kind of doing that detective work to make sure it was fair. And that's why there was a lot of going back and forth, because there was never that, hey, I think this might be extra work, where we would start documenting very specific times and items. So that's why there's a lot of back and forth.
Do you happen to have, or does anyone have a copy of the contract that I could review? I mean, I came onto this council after all this approved, so I find just myself having a hard time approving or denying things that I don't know whether we agreed upon scope or, you know, plus minus balance of the work before approval or, you know, I just, I'm seeing a sheet of paper with a bunch of people arguing on if these change orders are approved or necessary or whatever else, and I can't really make a decision either way without seeing the city and agree upon.
I guess I don't disagree with that, other than we pay MSA to tell us what we need to know. And if he, in my opinion, if MSA recommends that we proceed, then that's what we should do.
Sure.
If they recommend we shouldn't because we need more information, because he needs more information.
Sure.
Then that's the recommendation that I would be looking for, right? And this has gone back and forth, and I guess, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but if he's here to tell us he recommends this balance and he approves the process, even though it might not have been what we all wanted, if that's what we pay MSA in community planning funding for, that's what we pay them for.
Sure.
They come here with the recommendation. That's why at the last meeting, he came here and said, I can't do this because I need these things, right?
Right.
That's what he said at the last meeting. And you stand in here at this meeting, I believe, and again, I don't want to put words in his mouth, that he's, even though the process wasn't as we all wanted to see it or may have wanted to see it differently, right? It's his.
Let's go back to that. We know what's in the contract. We restated that. But we all remember, we were at a meeting and law excavating told us face to face that he was not going to do these change orders without following the process this time like it should be done, and he turned around and did it just as bad, just as wrong as he's always done it.
I agree with Jeff. I'm a process guy. And if a contractor could just take it upon himself to execute a change order without approval of the council or you, and then you come into us, I mean, you could approve it, but you've got to get our approval too. We're not spending this money just because you say so after the fact. It's the process. So any contractor, pair two four, can just come in, underbid forty, fifty thousand bucks and said, I'll get that in change orders that I'm going to execute myself. Nobody will do anything. I think it's a slippery slope for a city of council to approve a change order that they have not recognized earlier or approved, and then talking to the city attorney, said, we don't have to do it. So I can't see why we would do it and set ourselves up. You did it for Reed. Why would we do that?
So what Carl said was very well said and spot on with the way the contract is written. The city does have every right to deny a change order, even if the engineer recommends it. However, if it's denied, the contract says the contractor can submit a claim, then we go through the claims process. It starts with claims where the engineer reviews it. If the engineer determines it is reasonable, it's binding, so the city has to pay it. If the engineer denies it and the contractor still disagrees, he has the choice to go to mediation, which is essentially someone comes in and lets you two argue and then decides.
But we didn't see a change order like the job was done.
Oh, I agree. However, what I'm saying is essentially if the city denies this and Reed decides to go through the claims process, most of these change order items are rooted in some form of extra work. So he has a fairly good case in these. Now, that's why we are arguing the extent of them and the amounts, because we all agreed there was some form of extra work, but we are really fighting over how much time and how many people were there and why are you billing for two operators when one operator was doing something in the contract? That's where most of the arguments were at.
I'm not arguing that. I'm arguing process. No one, no one, not Reed, not you, came to this council before the change order or even after the change order was done coming, hey, we had to do this, 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 all that. No one, not until it's all said and done and we're going through this. Now, I think it would be wrong, fiscally irresponsible for this council to approve that work with not having any input before it was done. And I'll leave that back.
Some of the work was discussed on site and they were directed to do it. We were thinking some of the items were going to be paid through like pay items, so unit prices. So say, we wanted them to add thirty extra feet of storm sewer here. We on site do have the authority to do that. In some of these cases, he decided that, oh, that wasn't enough money to be paid because it was extra work on that on their end. So they would prefer to be paid T and M to make sure they were fairly compensated versus, say, twenty feet of pipe at a hundred dollars a foot. When they bid that, they're assuming they're putting like five hundred feet in at a time. So that's why a lot of contractors will default back to the T and M, because they don't really know if what the unit prices will cover it, and they just want to make sure it's fair.
So if you did that and you did approve it, why didn't you have the courtesy to come back and inform us at the time it was done?
So some of the items were just minor, like let's do an extra thirty feet of storm sewer here. Some of the items, Scott and the city staff were out there talking about various things, all talked about doing something. We weren't always aware that Reed was going to ask for an extra at the end.
Was Reed keeping you up on, up to date on material invoices and on extra change stuff? Or did all of this stuff show up after the job was completed and then he started throwing the change orders and extra materials and labor and all of those things at you?
He submitted at the end of the project.
Yes, it looks like he submitted everything on November twentieth here and his invoice was generated. That's what we're having you about, right? They're all, every single one is dated November twentieth with the scribble word of the date on each line item, so I'm assuming he just did everything in the end. Let me ask, since you guys seem to have a pretty good idea of this contract, is there a limit before approval is needed on the change order? I mean, most contractors I've worked with, we can go over our bid by X amount of money before anything needs to come back and be approved. I mean, I just, I don't know the parameters for a twenty-five thousand dollars of change orders on this product. Like, I don't know what's right and what's wrong, which is simply why I'm asking.
And again, I think it's a fair question, but again, that's MSA's role to tell us what's right and what's wrong.
Sure. I can recuse myself from this vote because I wasn't part of any of this or hiring MSA or anything else. And if that's going to make this easier, I feel, I would feel more comfortable just recusing myself from a vote here.
My biggest issue is setting a precedent of paying for items that should have came through a change order and we have no idea. I mean, the city's going to have projects coming up in the future and I don't know if that's a precedent for us.
We're kind of arguing over two tenths of a percent on a million dollars.
Yeah. I make a motion we deny the change orders.
So what happens if we do that?
So if the change orders are denied, then the contractor has the right to file the claim.
Okay. He didn't file a permit for dumping or anything else, so I'm, I would love to see him to be able to have the ability to file something.
You said the engineer would then go through each item by item, decide which ones were legitimate and should have been done, right?
They are legit.
Well, I know.
To try to avoid this.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, I know.
So what he's saying is Reed is going to win anyway. So my question is...
We don't know that.
Well, okay.
But we...
Is it common?
The engineer is the arbiter of a claim. The engineer reviews the claim. If there's still disagreement, that's when you go to mediation and that's where it turns.
There is no disagreement, is what he's saying right now. MSA is not in disagreement with Reed's changes, and he's recommending that we proceed.
We're in disagreement on how the process was unfolded.
It's done. And that's really where we're at. It's done.
All second is that motion.
I have a motion second to deny the change orders.
What's that do with EPA?
Yeah, what does that do for the loan? We got to get it settled down. We got to have, we got to close it out on the twenty-fifth, so.
I'm not sure. I haven't gone through the claims with escrow funding yet.
Because that was supposed to be closed up, closed out in November of twenty twenty-four.
And Reed was late on a lot of stuff he did, right?
Again, your opinion.
Yeah. Just while we're on that topic, if I prepare a change order, if this does, if the change order gets approved, I would also be adding the time extension, because after discussions with your attorney, we probably would pursue liquidated damages, because there's a lot of gray area in the additional work he did. And it's also a large, it's a significant effort to go through to try to get liquidated damages for a small amount, and damages are not meant to be punitive. You actually have to have documented proof that the city was financially damaged. Well, not financially, just damage, which can be financially or some other way that you could convert it to be financially damaged.
So Jared, are you saying that you're the arbiter and all that? So if you say, yep, everything's good to go, then we, the city, have to consider hiring you again because you never came to us with any of these change orders and you're doing this all after the fact without keeping us informed? Is that true?
I wasn't aware of the change orders. Our job is to review them when they're submitted. So a contractor has the right to submit a claim at any time they want. So even if like he said, hey, I have to do this work, and I tell him to do it anyway and I'm not paying extra, he can do that work and still come back and request extra. The contract is written that if there's any deviation in the scope, he has the right to ask for additional compensation.
And then I understand. My problem is you never came to us to address any of these points as the work was going on. So that's on you.
We were not aware of any of them.
You just said he came to you. Anyway, I won't belabor this. It's, I have a motion and a second.
Doug?
Please forgive my ignorance on this, but page two of this, there's a contingency. Twenty-eight thousand and five point one, there's a third point about six million dollars?
It's at the next line over. Yeah, I mean, you, I mean, it's still under the loan amount with the change orders of twenty-four thousand dollars. So we're, we're really, like I said, less than two tenths of a percent we are on.
And half of it's also forgiven.
And half of it is also forgiven. The longer that we take to close this out, maybe they'll rescind that. That's what I'm worried about, is the loan.
So what was the question? I apologize. If you were about the twenty-eight thousand contingency, so twelve thousand of it was used up by additional onsite time of MSA. The other sixteen-ish will be used up through law, some of which will be for any of the additional asphalt. We'll be maximizing the loan with extra asphalt.
I, to be honest, I'm not sure who to go with.
No, I can do, so I have two copies of the same invoices here that have separate dates for scope of work. One's dated four hours of labor and nine point three at a rate of a hundred and forty-six hours. The other's dated at six point eight for two hours of labor at one forty-six. Both for the same project, for the same work, with three months apart on the date that the work was completed. I mean, there's just so many discrepancies in the paperwork to filling here. Like, I'm, I can't take it to vote on this with like, I mean, was the scope of work completed on nine point three or six twenty? You know, or...
Again, he's not sure what you're looking at, so maybe you're looking at something that's...
What number?
My apologies. I got, I have two packets here, one that was provided after the meeting started, and it's, there's not invoice numbers on these, so it is for Mill Street, Phase Three.
Same order.
My apologies. It's, it's hard to align these without, you know, invoice numbers and they're in the same order. So I'm, again, I'm not trying to beat these issues. I'm just trying to make sense of the information.
And again, if you don't know what the process you're looking at, it's correlated.
I received this after the meeting started, said I had it right before the meeting started, and I have to admit, I've heard you what we're paying. If you agree that this is an acceptable period or an acceptable amount, it would normally, you know, be done.
I think that's what he's saying.
Yeah.
He's saying this is acceptable.
In general, that was another big issue, was his dates weren't matching our notes.
Right.
So he had to go back and change a bunch of stuff, because like he might have said, we backfilled on six twenty-eight. We're like, no, our notes say you did on seven twenty or seven one. So that's really where, like initially, right off the bat, we were like questioning everything.
So are you just agreeing with this to get it done, since he can't provide you proof, evidence, or correct timelines? Or are you agreeing with this because you agree that the scope was done, the dates he's invoicing you for, and the work was actually done? Because this is the same individual that we just had to send some court documents to for not adhering to the other things with the city? And like, please forgive me, it's just, there's, it, it's questionable, right?
I'm in general agreement that what he's requesting is fair.
Is fair. For...
I cannot vouch for every single line item.
Sure.
But I can say it's a reasonable cost compared to what I've seen at other projects.
Okay.
For similar work, and that like his rates are comparable to other contractors and that the work, even if I don't have a note that says he performed it for two hours, it's reasonable that it was taken twelve hours.
So you're saying, yeah, everything was...
So what he's presenting, is he saying it's good?
Sure.
But there's still the procedural portion of this.
Yeah.
So I guess it's incumbent on us as a body to, okay, we're going to have to be more cognizant of this.
I mean, that's, I guess where I'm at at this point is, I mean, MSA's been a good partner and MSA should get paid, but I would recommend revising future contracts to protect the city's interest in situations like this, to have things submitted for approval or have an acceptable range of change orders going over budget, you know, just so we can protect ourselves.
Yeah, you know, I don't know what, I don't know what the percentage is, that's an acceptable overage.
I can get very...
It is, I understand. And this is my opinion, but MSA approved these change orders.
After they were done, that's my problem.
About that, but it's also, it's not MSA's money.
Right. From my understanding, no change order were necessarily approved. It was just that the money on the change orders falls with a typical change order of a project, you know?
With the scope.
Yeah, so.
If another contractor was doing the change order, the rates they charged would fall.
We don't have another contractor. It's done.
So to clarify, we are recommended, we did not approve anything. We reviewed them and find them to be fair and recommend the city.
The amount you charged us is applicable to what other contractors are charging for the same scope of work.
Yes, and all his changes do...
You're not saying it was done.
They're all rooted in some form of extra work, some form of truth. It was just the amount that was mostly in question. And which is very typical of contractors as well. We ran into extra work this day. Well, here's everything I had on that day to try to get a half a day's work of work.
Yeah.
So this is very common.
I...
That's why we like to have T and M agreement ahead of time, that we're going to proceed on a T and M basis, so notes are very detailed.
Yes.
And like DOT projects... And like DOT projects, they sign off that day that everyone agreed to those hours.
It, it helps to add some, something on a paper to back up my, my question here.
So on Phase Two and One, there was project and change orders also, correct?
I believe so.
And that they were pre-approved, correct?
I don't, I can't recall exactly, but I'm sure there was some items that.
That I remember, yeah.
Most of the time, you can't wait till counsel, a lot of times we would have just. Wished that he would have said, this is gonna be extra work so that we could have documented it. We could have passed it on to the city, he could have ran it up the chain, so at least you guys knew that it was occurring and it could have been submitted timely. That did not happen.
And that's what I'm really bothered by, that did not happen, even after the fact, we have not heard anything on these change orders until. Hang on a second. Couple of weeks ago. John, what do you think of all this?
Um, yeah, I agree with you guys, you know, coming in at the end, uh, you know, he could have presented it up to me and then I could have brought you guys. Said, hey, he's talking about extra work here that kind of agreed upon already, but, you know, bringing it in and. I'm just worried more about the, the loan itself or the EPA because it's half forgiven. We miss deadlines.
Half forgiven, what, I mean.
Half the loan's forgiven, that's, we don't have to pay.
Yeah.
Okay, and so what is the amount that we, that's not, is forgiven?
So it's a one point two million dollar project, so it'd be six hundred thousand forgiven, right?
That is supposed to be closed out.
Of all this. And we're trying to, we're.
Of all this.
And they're trying to get it all on the loan.
Yeah.
So that would.
And it's all in the days of the loan.
Out of pockets.
Well, was it made right? So what process are we gonna make to make the change that you're not gonna authorize? And, and again, we're arguing over twenty four thousand dollars.
I did witness some of the work on these change orders, but I didn't know they were gonna be change orders, but I did witness some of the work done here.
Did he run anything past you?
As far as change order, no, but.
The work, yes.
The work, yeah.
And you're okay, you, you talked to Jared, I don't put words in your mouth.
Yeah, the.
This is acceptable, the process, I mean, not necessarily the process, but the numbers are, they're acceptable.
The numbers at the beginning, no, but after talking with Reed, talking with Jared, I think we're pretty clear.
You're at a point where you agree with MSA that the city should proceed.
Right.
Yes.
But I agree with what you're also saying.
I don't know how we fix the process this late.
Yeah.
I mean, by delaying it, we gain the.
The process was replaced when the con, when the project started.
I don't disagree.
The, the process didn't need fixed, it just needed to be followed.
We weren't very clear at the reconstruction meeting.
It's been gone so long, it's, uh, it's the administration's fault for not moving this forward, for letting us know what's going on. We, I mean, we're getting it last, you gotta decide this now, otherwise you lose X millions of dollars. It's, uh, it, it's just not right, it's, uh, so if we deny this. And then, then what happens, the loan is denied? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And we're being held over a barrel here because it, it took so long to get this to us? Because when we talked to you about this a month or so ago. It took all this time for us to get it now. And now we gotta do, do it right now. And, uh, yeah, it's not, I don't know, it's, it's, it's you.
They've been working on it the whole month, fine.
To be clear.
Going back and forth.
Yeah, to be clear, I could have just presented you his original forty thousand dollars instead of approve it.
Yeah.
I spent a lot of time on this going through and cut twenty thousand dollars off of it.
Okay, what does the actual loan document the government say as far as, is there a timeline that's gotta be closed out by a certain date, I mean, you know?
EPA is usually reasonable.
Yeah.
If you went through claims, my guess is they would be reasonable, however, I would not recommend it. So I'm telling you that most contractor, most contracts. And most people that do mediation favor contractors. Specs favor contractors, contracts favor contractors, attorneys favor contractors. Just, I, I, I've been through mediation, I've seen all these things play out and labor unions. Lobby a lot of the stuff that gets put into laws.
So what's our drop dead date, um, to get this done, so that it'll impact the, the loan?
At this point, I don't think there is a drop dead date, I just know that SRF is asking what the status is and they are announcing to get the loan closed out. Because they're just gonna start working on their next year loan.
Sure.
Program and they wanna make sure all those past fiscal year loans are closed out before they hit the fiscal year.
Carl. It's twenty four thousand, right, is what they're, what we're arguing about. On a million two, on a million two.
Can I also add a couple more quick points? The number one, unmarked water service. The city was not aware that service was there, so when they hit it and helped fix it, they are justified compensation for that. We were just arguing about the amount and the time.
Not that it was hit, that it was unmarked and it was not part of the project.
Number four, that work, at least some of it was within the contract already. The scope of that work related to that intersection was modified, so he requested we pay this method at the sum of. Just over eight thousand, if we would have paid him through the contract pay items, it probably would have been like seven thousand. So like that, that was why one of those, like, we weren't even arguing with that one throughout the whole time. So I would, I would just caution you to blanket deny the loan.
I mean, you've been a good partner and I mean, you've helped, you know, in my, um, endeavor with John and the VP East and everything. And twenty four thousand over six hundred thousand forgivable seems like, uh, a lesson learned in my eyes for contracts moving forward. I, i- if there is a contract with Reed and the city, I, I know I've been asked before if you'd like to really like to see it just for you.
I have it at work.
Okay, okay, I, I'd just like to see, you know, how it's drawn out, so maybe you can, you know, work towards, um, some different language moving forward.
I think it's gonna be a little while before we do anything.
Yeah, we don't.
Sure, but yeah, best, best practice is at minimum, but I mean, I would make a recommendation to approve.
Look, we have a, we have a motion to second that, sorry.
Yeah, the, the big thing is that, let's let the attorney look at it, let's.
Your intent.
Yeah.
He's been involved.
I haven't heard a recommendation, last I talked to him, he said, we can turn it down if we wanted to.
When did you talk to him?
Last meeting.
I talked to him today.
What did he say?
He said, table it, if there's any argument, table it.
It was too late to get it tabled when they motioned to.
I don't know, either of your sons are making changes. How does that work, about trying to change it to table?
I think it has to fail.
It has to fail first.
Even it's already been seconded and I think it has to fail.
And then someone can make a motion to table.
Then to table or proceed to approve, then you have to close out the motion on the, on the table. And you can't, I don't believe you can motion to, to change it because you, you, you made it, you seconded it, I think, and there was a lot of discussion, so. It has to, uh, go through its motions.
So it's approved to.
So you have first and a second to deny.
And it hasn't been voted.
Yeah, so now I need to vote.
And then we can vote against the table.
If, if everybody votes, uh, no.
Oh, but if everybody votes no, then we're, we're good to go.
I will know.
Okay.
Hopefully, I'd like to see it.
So we have a.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the motion to deny.
Yes, when you're ready, please call it over.
Mike Briscoe.
Yes.
Jeff Elliott.
Yes.
Doug Bergren.
Yes.
To deny it. Paul Kaczynski.
Yes.
Jeff.
This is.
To deny the whole thing.
No, this is deny it done.
We didn't deny, no, then we, no.
Then we can, there's confusion here, this is.
Yo, you're going the wrong way.
This is, no, to deny the whole entire thing.
And deny the whole thing.
Yeah.
Deny what he's presenting.
Deny the table.
No, this, we have to make this not pass, then to table it.
That's what I'm talking about.
So yes is bad.
So yes is bad.
There was such a bad.
Yes is bad.
Yes is bad?
Yeah.
Then I will know.
I'm gonna start drinking.
I need a chalkboard. All right, so Mike was a yes. Jeff was a yes to deny, Paul, you're keeping yours as a yes to deny.
Yes.
Doug is a no, Jeff Stinson.
No.
Joey Wilburn.
No.
I'll vote no.
Okay.
Do you have to ask for my vote or do I volunteer? For the minutes, you should ask.
I should ask, Mayor, here's the tie, your vote is?
No. So now we can motion to table.
Does anyone want to motion to table?
Or approve.
I'm gonna make a motion to table, um.
I would recommend that if we table it, we'd, uh, have a meeting next Tuesday at one o'clock at the treatment home, if we can.
Can we move it to one thirty, give me that time to get back into town?
Yep, cause Jill has the regional games, she needs to be.
Yeah, I'll just make sure it's timed off.
One thirty at the vice water plant.
Tuesday, one thirty.
Tuesday, one.
No, I know, I was just.
Next Tuesday?
I know, it's.
Yeah, I can, you want.
Well, we have a table that you have, so we need to, but we need to approve the table, so we have a motion to.
I'll, I'll second it.
We have a motion to second to table. I have a motion second to table, item two, law awaiting T and M change order request, when you're ready, please call it over.
Jeff Stinson.
Yes.
Paul Kaczynski.
Yes.
Doug Bergren.
Sure.
Joey Wilburn.
Yes.
Mike Briscoe.
Yes.
Jeff Elliott.
Yes.
Motion's here, it's in your right, Jeff, I apologize because we should have done that and then I should have set the date, I apologize for that. So one o'clock on the eighteenth at the treatment clinic, no boxing gloves.
Hey Jared, do you need to contact the, you get ten years?
Loan. EPA to. Part of the.
That would be Jill.
Oh, okay. Just to see, you know, I mean, like a timeline or.
Yeah, you're giving a perfect.
Any pressure on that?
Yeah, I'll reach out for, we'll have the mail.
Item three, updates community board.
Yeah, it really is.
Relations board at the Thompson prison, Mike, that was you.
That was me. I went to, um, meeting, they have a community relations board at the, um, prison, it's called the, um. Federal Correctional Institute now. These are great meetings, they have all the communities are represented, either somebody from their council or. Or one of the offices in the community. And Savannah had a big presence with, um, their chamber, two people from their chamber commerce. And Clinton had their sheriff, chief of police and another police officer there, Riverview had people there. And they talk about what was, um, what's going on in the community and just sharing, um, with the prison staff. What's going on, so hopefully entice new people to try to come into their community. And this meeting that I just went to was probably the largest number of people that had attended. And it was the best program and information that we've received in a prison for a long time. They completely changed their mission from a super max prison to, um, minimal security. And, um. Think a guess how many inmates, I'm not gonna say prison, they call them inmates, so you gotta use the right terminology. Anyone have a guess how many inmates they have currently at the Thompson Correctional Institute?
Nine hundred and twelve.
Two thousand. Two thousand inmates. And they have a huge staff, a psychologist, doctors and, um, dental tech, they're really a big staff, but. Their staffing went down from when it was maximum security, six hundred authorized, down to three hundred and forty five. And now they're about eighty percent staff. And they're doing some great things with these inmates and this thing that they presented just impressed the heck out of me. They started a program where they're training service dogs to give to veterans and anyone who requires a, a service dog free. They had two dogs there, three and five months old. And they're bringing three more in and they're gonna stay with them from twelve to eighteen months and they're gonna train them. And the inmates are, are the ones that train them and they stay with the inmate the whole time. And, um, they. They go out and the inmates aren't allowed to leave, but the dogs have to be integrated into society so they can do their job. But they're with the, uh, person they're gonna live with. And they do things like open the refrigerator, turn on lights and, uh, get the paper, many, many household chores. But one of the biggest things they do is, uh, compression. A lot of these vets have PTSD and they go into panic mode and they're laying on the floor. These dogs come and sit on their chest until the trauma passes and they, they can sense all this. And when these inmates are done training these dogs. They have a process, they get certified, they can get five different certificates on dog handling, dog training. So when they return to, um, civilian life, if you will, uh, they have skills and they can get a job. And they love getting out too because they have, they call field trips. They have to get out with the dog, so they take them to a movie, take them to a restaurant, take them to a grocery store with the inmates, but it's in a movie setting. Just to get the dogs acclimated to, um, being out there. So great, great program that, that they have going on there and, um. They're asking for a lot of volunteer help and I know, uh. They can send people out to communities to help also, but it's a little cumbersome, you have an inmate, you have to go pick them up from the back end. Like if we want them to move along, but it's a little. Labor intensive for the communities to do some of that, but there's an opportunity out there for community needs, some additional manpower. To get these people out there. And another interesting point, they said they were really workloaded, um. When the president took office, they had a process, ten pardons, they got the word at about ten o'clock in the morning. The people had to be out at the end of the day. So they were really scurrying to, to release those prisoners and, you know, you never think that some, you think of those people being someplace else. But anyway, they're, they're working hard, they're, um, doing a great job trying to integrate in the community. And, um, they, they're very aware of the Davis Community Center. Nancy goes to the meetings regularly, the warden has been out here, they always recognize what we're doing. Out there, the work Nancy's doing. And this is a great marketing tool for us to get new people coming in, come to our town. And I, um, really hopped up the Shimer College, uh, Shimer Square project. I was informed that it's probably gonna be opening around. I was informed that it's probably gonna be opening around the August timeframe, the first residence. And the daycare is gonna be in the same time area. So I put this out. And it, I'm, I'm hoping it'll help new people coming in to look at us as a place to live. This is, come out here. They got daycare centers. They got a great community center. Come on out here. So anyway, I, I hope we keep participating in this community relation board moving forward. And they're, they're doing a great job there.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Motion's adjourned.
We have a motion, second to adjourn. You ready to fill the role?
Jeff Elliott. Jeff Stinson.
Yes.
Doug Bergren. Jody Wilburn. Paul Kaczynski.
Yes. Yes.